Close, special meeting in order at 6:00 PM. Enter closed session under NCGS 143318115 to establish or instruct the staff or agent concerning the negotiation of the price in terms of contract concerning the acquisition of real property. Parcel number 07111002 and NCGS 143318 dot 1113. Attorney-client privilege, Waste Connection versus Town of Indian Trail 24, CV 22641-590. Can I get a motion to go into closed session and bring Todd Hunsinger and Adam McLamb into closed session?
I make a motion to go into closed session inviting Adam McLamb and Todd Hunsinger.
All in favor? Unanimous. I'd like to return to open session and have some, would somebody close, closed session?
Motion to close, closed session.
All in favor? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, special meeting.
All in favor? Unanimous, unanimous. Very good, thank you. Johnny, why don't you lead us in?
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to the end.
You'll remain standing for a moment of silence. Just want to, a couple of things to go over here. I guess the only thing we have in the town event is a July 4th parade, which is a big parade on July the 4th. I hope everybody here can make it. It's a great parade and a lot of hard work goes into it. And it might be a little warm, but we'll have a good time. I want to, something I haven't done here before, I wanted to bring up something at the start of the meeting, it's actually two things. And I wanted to talk about a young man named Elijah Lee Tucker, who Porter Ridge graduated a couple of years ago. And several people in Indian Trail had asked me about this. Elijah passed away a couple of weeks ago at Lake Hickory in a boating accident. I don't know if you guys, a lot of you may have saw it on television. And he was quite the young man. And this was written by an Indian Trail resident and I wanted to read it. And one thing we want to do is not forget Elijah, ever. So Elijah, age 22, passed away on June 17th, 2024. Eli, as his, Eli and his cousin and one other person died that night. He was a 2020 graduate of Porter Ridge High School and was currently attending UNC Charlotte. Eli enjoyed sports and really excelled at football. But Eli loved the drums. He switched from football to marching band. Everything Eli did, he was good at. Supporting himself while attending UNC Charlotte, he worked at 131 Main in South Park. Eli made many friends there. With his easygoing, fun-loving nature, Eli could light up a room with his smile and infectious laugh. With a tight schedule of work and school, Eli would take time out to tutor and volunteer when it, when he could. Earlier this week, Lida and, got a letter, and Lida's his mother, from UNC Charlotte, stating that Eli Tucker made the chancellor's list. Left behind are his parents, Lida Tucker and Gary Tucker. Twin sisters, let's see. Twin sisters, E, let's see, I'm trying to get their names right. Emmer, you might know that his two twin sisters' names, I've got it here. Arianna and Ia Maria, okay? Left behind, they're left, his sisters, okay? Eli stepped up to, and saved money and bought her, his sister a car. As any young man would, Eli would get invites to move in with groups of guys, but he wanted to stay at home with his family for a little longer. Eli's absence will be missed by his group of friends. Eli was everything, was at everywhere and every place. Pick-up football games, Thursday night basketball games, and fantasy football draft parties. Eli's funeral was attended by more than 200 people that loved him very much. 131 Main at South Park closed last Friday afternoon, so all their employees could attend Eli's funeral. In his obituary, it is written, "In lieu of flowers," contributes can be, contributions can be made to one of Eli's priorities, his sister's college education. Eli Tucker is the definition of someone with character. Indian Trail should be proud to call Eli Tucker a fellow citizen. Lastly, Eli's favorite line he would say when he was leaving or saying goodbye, "Hold it down, brother." So I wanted to say that, and Eli will not be forgotten. And as my understanding, they had a very nice funeral at Indian Trail Baptist Church and recognized him, he was quite a young man. So anyway, say a prayer for his family and his, and his friends. Okay. I don't know what I did with my agenda. Let's see. There it is. All right. That brings us to additions and deletions. Can I get a, do I have any first of all?
Item 7H, I'd like to remove for further discussion.
Okay, 7A, you have what now?
Eight.
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 Okay, which is, which is it again?
For further discussion, 7H, Street Assistance. If I can move it off to consent agenda.
7H.
7H is in hotel.
It's in hotel.
7H.
7H.
Street Assistance.
All right, and what do you want to do with that?
I want to move it to, for, I guess it'd be under new business, 10A.
Yeah, would be new business, because we haven't discussed it before, so move 7H down to item number 10, new business.
Okay.
That'll be item 10A. We also have a removal under Presentations 4B, which is a GOFA or GFOA award. We will defer that until the July meeting.
Strike 4B.
Yes, sir. Defer that to July.
Okay. All right. Everybody got that? All right, can I get a, a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda amended.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, that brings us to new business. That's Dr. Nah, Nahah? I see, Nahah Dada. Come on up. Tell us a little, tell us a little bit about Method Eye Care.
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, council members, mayor. My name is Dr. Nahah Dada. I have opened Method Eye Care, which is an optometry practice in Indian Trail as of six weeks ago. So things are going well and we are open, finally seeing patients. We're located across from Sun Valley High School, next to the Publix. And, you know, I just wanted to share a little bit about our practice and what we're doing. So I started this practice after nearly a decade and a half of practicing optometry. It's been a lifelong dream of mine, finally getting to do it, and I really wanted to be in a community, serving the local people here. That's really the heart of the practice. It's a family-owned, family eye care practice. We're seeing patients of all ages, from young children to our elderly in the community. I'm offering services that are state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art technology, latest in digital eyewear for vision needs, as well as for ocular health. Our business hours are Monday through Wednesday, 8 to 4; Thursday, 10 to 6 for evening hours; Fridays, 8 to 1; and Saturday, we're also open by appointment. You know, one thing I sort of wanted to make sure we offer is a very, is a very comfortable place for people to come to where they can really express their problems that they're having and not feel rushed. So this is really the heart of our practice. We take our time with everybody. Our optician, Sandra, is wonderful and she is ready to help everyone meet their vision needs. In the exam room with me, you know, I wanted to make a comfortable approach to eye care, so I always thought that the two most things I hear people hate about coming to see the eye doctor is getting their eyes dilated and also having air blown in the eyes. So, you know, I've actually, not eliminated dilation, but we are using technology that looks at the peripheral part of the retina without needing to put drops in. So I feel that this is really offering everyone a good insurance policy to make sure that their retina is healthy. As far as the eye pressure goes, we've eliminated that as well. We're not using drops or air in the eyes, we're using a different technology to, to check that. So I just wanted to express this and I thank you all for allowing me to come and talk to you for a couple of minutes about my new business. And if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Yes.
I just want to mention that I first met Nahah at the Fun Day and the Lions Club was in a real jam because due to just a cross-up in communications, we didn't have a doctor ready for us. And so, thank goodness, Nahah volunteered to jump in and, and save our bacon and did a great job. And she, she's right over next to Publix and right beside a Jet's Pizza. She and I talked and she knows where all the pizza places are in Indian Trail, and that's a feat in itself, if you know that. But anyway, I personally want to thank her and I hope everybody will give her an opportunity to, to serve them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clarence?
Basically, I was going to say the same thing. Thank you for coming out and donating your services to the Family Fun Day. My granddaughter, I brought her, took her in there and so she got a free eye exam, so I was very appreciative. So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. My pleasure.
Todd?
Welcome to Indian Trail.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I have some business cards. Would anybody like them? Should I give them to you or?
You can bring them up.
Bring them up? Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. God bless you.
We've already shaken hands, haven't we? Thank you.
We have something for you. Come here, we'll get a picture of them.
Okay, absolutely.
You're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate it. Adam?
Hello, mayor and council. We are going to continue our tradition of having recipients of the ARPA-enabled funds come up and speak with y'all. Tonight, Captain Blythe is here to talk about three different projects that the town has partnered with them on. So I'll let him get up and talk now.
Okay, as y'all, council and mayor, y'all are familiar with the fire trucks, I'm pretty sure, right? That the town funded through ARPA. That's been, that's been a two-year project. Well, yeah, two years. We just put our truck in service last week. I think all of you got an invite, some of you came out to go through that process. That's a million and a half dollars that we didn't have to raise our taxes to fund. So that was a big help. That was, I know in the conversations with the council early on, that was one of the questions, what's the big, what's the big thing coming up that you're going to struggle to fund? And we landed on this ladder truck, you know, no bricks and mortar, that was, that was it. So beyond that, the ladder truck was a, was a large purchase that was, you know, required as the trucks that we had were, you know, 21, 22 years old. So, so that was a big help. We could have those in service. I have mine in service, I'm pretty sure Stallons is in service, I'm not sure where Baker's is with theirs, but ours and Stallons are both in service and we're using them. So fortunately, we haven't had a fire since last Thursday. So, you know, so we're, we're still waiting on that. The other two projects are kind of a little bit different in, they're in the prevention side of things. So we were able to purchase through ARPA, the ARPA committee recommended the purchase of, called Fire Stops. And what they are, is they're little cans that hang underneath the range hood on your, on your range. And if you ever have a little grease fire or something on the stove top, it has a little fuse in there that melts out and drops ABC powder onto the fire and extinguishes the fire before it does really any damage. You know, so those are, those are great with a lot of the older 55 and over neighborhoods, we're pushing those out to those folks and, and, you know, able to get them in there. The number one cause of fires are cooking, right? And it's always french fries. Most of the time it's french fries. Because they're heating the grease, they forget about it, whatever, and it boils over onto the eye, next thing you know, we got a fire, right? Gets into the kitchen cabinets, these things stop that. It's, and they're relatively cheap, so we were able to, we were able to purchase some of those, I think that was about a $3,000 project, and we were able to fund those. The second thing that we, that we bought on the prevention side is a fire extinguisher simulator. And what the problem is, when we go to these 55 and over neighborhoods or any of the businesses, some of the problem is we have to actually light a fire in a pan of diesel fuel or we use an LP gas prop that, that burns fire, right? And we have the people go out with extinguishers and put that fire out. That's how we teach people that. This particular prop is, it's, it's a laser. So it's, it uses the laser, they can point it at the screen and it teaches them how to put the fire out without actually having to have a fire. We can do it in this council chambers, it's got a smoke machine that comes with it, so we can actually smoke it up in here and kind of give you the, the whole effect, if you will, of how to use a fire extinguisher, when and why. You know, so that's, that's really a benefit and, you know, industry has to do training with their folks on fire extinguishers for insurance purposes, it can be used for that as well. But it's, it's really a prevention tool that we'll use at, at events when we're set up doing fire safety and those things. So those are, those are tools that we got on the prevention side, and I think that altogether was about $26,000, $27,000 worth of, of ARPA funds that went to purchase that. So that's a, that's a big, that's a big deal to us. You know, we're not getting, we're not getting any less busy, if you will, y'all familiar, we're trying to build a second station. Fingers crossed it's going to be done sometime in the next couple of months. You know, it's been a long project, you know, going through a lot of the holdups with COVID supply chain issues and other things with, with components. But, so we're, we're expanding and we're growing. You know, our services are expanding and growing, so these prevention tools are going to help us to grow that side of the, the fire department as well. And that, those tools are available to anybody in the, you know, in the, in the county. If somebody calls us and asks us to bring it somewhere, we're going to take it. So, you know, it's available to Stallons Fire Department or Baker's Fire Department or anybody else that needs to use it. So that's a good thing. Do y'all have any questions for me about any of the ARPA projects?
No, not on the projects. I just wanted to see if you were going to bring that fire truck to the parade? Is it going to be in the parade?
Yes, it will be. I think. We have to work that out between us because we don't want them all in the parade, right?
Right.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely have a truck in the parade. I, you know, it depends on what Stallons is going to do, if they're going to keep theirs in service or put theirs in. You know, we can't have them all in the parade, so, yeah. So we worked that out between us on that day.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Anybody else? We just wanted to thank you too for the, for the ride. I know I heard several employees talk about, on, on social media about riding in a fire truck.
Right.
They were excited as, as a young kid riding in it.
Good. And, and it's, it's there, so if anybody that didn't make it wants to come by and, and take a look at it or get in it and go for a little ride, then we can probably make that happen.
And on Thursday, the mayor was, is going to drive that truck. Oh, I'm, I'm just kidding.
Y'all come ride on Thursday then.
I'm joking, they're not going to let you make that.
But, you know, it's, it was actually a really good little ceremony we did, it's kind of a push-in that, that goes back to the beginnings of the fire service, back horse-drawn fire apparatus, when, you know, just a little.
Went from 300, when you first started, 300 calls to 3,000 calls.
Yeah, so, yeah, so when I started or was, you know, first appointed as a fire chief, we ran 300 calls. Now we're running 3,000, and that's been 30 years. I didn't, I didn't really.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for all you've done.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that brings us to public comments. By addressing council, you acknowledge you've read the town's public comment rules and will abide by them. Gail, come on up.
Hello, my name is Gail Mercurio. I reside at 3411 Brooktree Lane in Indian Trail, and I'm the president of the HOA Board for Brookstone Village. I'm here representing 185 homeowners and their families in our community. On June 18th, there was a water line break at the edge of a driveway of a home at 3513 Brookstone Trail in our community. According to the owner of that property, the water ran for more than 10 and a half hours and aft, and took three visits from Union County Water to, to find the right tool to shut it off. And so there was so much water on this, on the street that it flooded a portion of Brookstone Trail and a nearby cul-de-sac street. And then it ran into the wooded area of our walking trails and found its way into a very dry stream, up until that point, and then it followed into our pond. That water was chlorinated and it polluted the pond and killed all the fish in the pond. And it made the pond very brown. There are at least 100 dead fish still there, of various sizes. I can show you pictures of some. I was very surprised myself at how big some of these fish were. It's not a pond that we, we don't stock the pond. As a matter of fact, we have a sign that says, "No fishing," because we have a fountain and we don't want anybody to hook their line on the fountain and wreck the fountain. So by Friday, I had residents that were complaining about the dead fish and the stink. And so I called the mayor and he told me to call Mr. McLaurin. And Mr. McLaurin followed, I asked me to follow up with an email to him about the situation, and he forwarded that to Mr. Nylan with Union County. And on the 21st of June, Mr. Nylan emailed that he was looking into it. So from the 18th to 21st, he's looking into it. And now it's June 25th, and we still have a cloudy pond, dead fish. And to me, this is a health and safety issue. And I don't think that anybody should be taking off a weekend, just, I think it should be an emergency kind of thing. So something should have been done before now and nothing so far. I haven't heard from Mr. Nylan yet. And so I, we can't dispose of the fish or clean the pond ourselves, and we believe that Union County Water is responsible for the damage. And so we just want to know what, what's the next step here? And if I still have three minutes, I mean, pardon my three minutes, do I still have it?
You got, you got a few seconds.
I get eight seconds. My other comment is, our community is 30 years old, we've asked repeatedly for paving of our roads.
Go ahead.
And DOT, we don't want to know what's happening, because they keep pushing it out and pushing out. It's 30 years that we haven't had repaved roads. That's my second thing.
We will get to that. We'll, we'll, we have a council comment right after one other person speaks.
Okay.
And then we'll come back.
I'm good.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes, my name is Patrick O'Connor. I live in Indian Trail, right behind Zaxby's. I'm not really here to complain, but about the speed limit change, the very first day that it did that, I turned on the Indian Trail Road and I purposely set my cruise control for 25. There was a guy behind me in an F-250, and I was pretty sure he was going to push me out of the way until we got through the traffic light, then he turned off. But I'm just concerned with, you know, other people said that people have passed them because they're going too slow, and I just think it's going to be more of a traffic situation than it was until people actually, you know, get used to doing the 25. But there's roads like South Fork that has all kind of residents, their speed limit's 35. Faith Church Road, coming out by Food Lion, theirs is 35. So I just don't understand why it has to be 35. They could just put up a sign saying it's 25 unless, you know, labeled something else. But it was just my concern with, you know, people have asked me what they did that. I said, "I know they have an ordinance that, that it's," I think they said, "If it's a Indian Trail maintained road, it's supposed to be 25 and stuff." But I, I just think there could be exceptions. I don't think 25 or even 35 going through Indian Trail is a big hazard to anybody's business, but that's the only thing I wanted to bring up.
Thank you, Patrick. Okay, council, your turn, council comments. Anybody want to talk about, anybody have any questions or answers?
Will you want to get him though?
You want to go ahead and, you want?
Um, yes. I just sent another email to Patrick Nylan, wanting to know if there's an update. What I can do is call the Patrick's boss, Brian Matthews, and again emphasize to them that this has been going on for almost a week. I think we talked on Thursday evening, I believe, and request that they get some sort of resolution. I don't know what their jurisdiction is on this, but I do imagine that it's pretty smelly. As far as her roads, if it's DOT roads, I can ask Mr. Hunsinger to reach out to DOT to see when it's on the schedule to be paved.
Well, I have a question. Does the roads have a difference in the responsibility of the pond?
I'm sorry?
What the roads are, does that have any responsibility to what the pond is?
No. But I thought I heard her talk about the fact that her roads, they're wanting them paved. She talked about basically two issues. The first obviously being the dead fish, which is the most important of, or the more important of the two. And so I went ahead and while I was commenting.
Okay. I was following the dead fish more than I was the road.
I switched gears.
So, well, here's my next question. Technically, who is, and it doesn't really matter, it needs to be fixed, but who would be responsible? And, and let me just ask it this way. Would it be the county? I don't think it's the town because it wasn't, it was, it's county water. Is it the county or is it the town or is it the community? Or is that a question that can be answered?
I don't know the answer right offhand. I don't think it is the town. Gail and I had discussions on possible causes of the fish kill, whether it had been the extreme heat that sometimes invokes the dissolved oxygen, if you will, and kills fish. I think, I think her contention is that since the county line broke and the dead fish were right behind it, that it's the county's.
That would, it would seem to me it would be the county's.
Yeah.
Job to, and if necessary, Gail, I'll, I'll, I'll call the county tomorrow too. I know, I know that we'll all call and.
I just wanted to go up the chain of command.
Well, that's as far as the chain can go, is the county. I mean, you'll, you'll call the county manager.
Yeah, I could call the county manager if you want to call the county chairman to make him aware of that.
I will. I'll call JR tomorrow.
Yeah.
And, and just to let you know what, what they say, you know, on it. So, you know, we want to get, we want to obviously get that problem fixed too. Todd?
Is there a different channel to go to since it could be a health issue?
EPA or something?
EPA is a federal organization.
Oh, I meant with the county.
With the county. I would probably say the county manager.
Okay.
That would be my guess. And of course, the county commission chair can sometimes help things along also.
Health department perhaps, Mike?
Yes, the health department may have. The reason I say the county manager's, kind of, a lot of the stuff funnels eventually through his office.
Can I just say one thing, that, that pond has stormwater drains, so anytime it overflows, it goes through, you know, it goes through all of that, underneath the street and out somewhere else. So it's not just that self-contained pond that's going nowhere, all that water and all those dead fish went, some of them are still there, but some of them are gone somewhere else, not sure where.
Patrick, just to let you know, on the agenda, item eleven B is about the speed limit, so if you hang around, you'll get more information there, and I, I'll say my part on that as well.
Gail? We'll, we'll let you know something tomorrow, hopefully, uh, hopefully we'll, I, I don't know that anybody's gonna be out there, but we, we need to get somebody out there to, to do it, so, thank y'all for coming up. All right, that brings us to law enforcement, Captain Mullis.
I had to giggle just a little bit, I saw you standing on your tiptoes to get up here, I just, just.
Well, good afternoon. Um, so I think, uh, the first meeting of the month, um, Lieutenant Evans was here and gave you the, kind of, the, some of the crime stuff, so I'm gonna focus on, on the traffic end of it, um, tonight, but I wanted to kind of bring about, I don't know if anybody saw the, um, what the sheriff saw, was the post that they put out about all the fictitious tags that are, are, we're, we're getting in Indian Trail. Had a, had a conversation earlier in the week and, with the sheriff, and he was at a, um, a, a sheriff's meeting conference, and, and that is getting traction statewide, so, um, like I say, we're, we're doing good things there. And part of that, Sergeant Murray put on a, um, and I gave you the stats there on, you can see in front of you, we did a countywide kind of enforcement, um, back on June twelfth. Howie Patrol was involved, Monroe was involved, Waxall, Stallings, several local municipalities were involved in this, it was a countywide, um, event, but, uh, as you can see, it went for, it was a twenty-eight officers involved, that was a total of two-hundred-and-twenty-five charges as a result of that, that initiative, and we were looking for, basically, telling other, these other municipalities what we're looking for on these tags, because we're having a big problem with them right here in Indian Trail, just because we're, we, we butt up to Charlotte, and a lot of those are being manufactured in Charlotte, and they're coming this way. But out of that twenty-eight, eight of those guys, um, were, stayed here in Indian Trail, and I tried to, to, I tried to separate the numbers, but I, I wasn't able to get that, the Indian Trail numbers, as opposed to the whole county numbers, but, um, like I say, countywide, I think we did a fairly good job, um, but wanted to brag on those guys who put that on, because, like I say, all that started here, and, uh, we're, we're doing good things proactively. But, um, other than that, just for the, um, the month of May, um, we had a total of sixty-nine wrecks, uh, we took thirty-one reports from that, uh, just Indian Trail folks, and you can see where those are and, and, uh, and what those were, what those kind of consisted of, but, um, like I say, I know that the, uh, it's been brought up, um, so I'll, I'll kinda talk about the elephant in the room for a minute, the speed limit change out here on Indian Trail Road. The, our guys were out, I was on vacation that week of the twelfth, but I know that our folks were out there, and part of that was just to, uh, they stopped several people for speeding that day, um, after the speed limit had changed, had changed, and all of those were, we didn't write any citations, a lot of that, like I say, being proactive was just to say, "Hey," I think, kinda to address your, your, when people learn what the speed limit is, then, then things will be different, um, but they, they stopped several folks just to say, "Hey, just be aware, the speed limit has changed," um, and so that was just as a, as a courtesy, I guess you would say, that we did, we did go out and we, you know, we weren't stopping folks for running twenty-seven miles an hour in a twenty-five mile an hour zone, we were forty miles an hour plus, um, and stopped numerous, numerous vehicles, um, but anyway, we're, we're, we're working on it, and if you guys decide to make it five, twenty-five, thirty-five, or a hundred and five, it's yours, you can do what you want to do with it, and we'll enforce whatever you decide, but, um, like I say, we are, we are trying to be proactive, and we'll continue to do that, and, like I say, we'll go from there, that's all I got, traffic side.
Very good, thank you, uh, appreciate that, Andy, you got a question?
Well, that's okay.
I'm, I'm good, I'm just, go ahead, lay it on. What's a forged tag, I mean, is that like, I mean, I, I know it used to be a problem with people taking, uh, temporary tags.
Right, so that's what it is, they're, they are forged, they are temporary tags, the paper tags that you're seeing, um, people have found that, of course, they're a whole lot easier to forge than a metal tag, of course, um, and what we're seeing is, a lot of folks, um, for instance, South Carolina is, is a big, there's a big issue out of South Carolina with those tags, South Carolina has completely changed the way that they print their tags, and how they print those, as far as the number and what's printed on those, um, but if you ever, if you see the, um, the South Carolina, there were like thirty-five day, forty-five day, and some sixty-day tags, they were white background, red and blue writing on those tags, so as of, I wanna say the beginning of May, maybe even before that, all of those tags that were in circulation legitimately were no longer valid as of, like two months ago. But people have continued to make those on their own, um, they're easy to print on paper tag, um, we're seeing a lot of different, um, not only just the forged, forged tags, but now we're seeing a lot of, um, like when you go to the DMV to get your tag, right, they give you a sheet of paper, because you have to prove that you have, show proof of ownership and proof of insurance and all of those kind of things. So what we're seeing a lot of times with these tags is folks don't have insurance, and they're paying anywhere from fifty to two-hundred dollars, um, and you can get forged tags, forged, um, insurance paperwork, uh, all of, and, and it's a, it's a way of getting around the system, I guess, but, uh, we're seeing a, quite a bit of it, um, where, where folks either can't get insurance, um, and, and my guys are, are a little bit frustrated, but, uh, you, you, you pull one of these tags over, uh, or one of these vehicles over with a forged tag, um, and if you are in the roadway, you know what I'm saying, on the side of the road, we're, we're towing those vehicles, but it's just like any other piece of property, if you drive that, that car out of the tow lot, you have to show proof of insurance, driver's license, and, and have a valid tag for it, but if you, um, rent you a tow truck and go pick it up, it's just like any other piece of property, all you have to do is show that it's yours, and you can tow it around the corner, and go to Charlotte and buy you another fifty-dollar tag, and take off driving it again. What we have started doing in Ju, in June, and I don't have the hard numbers, uh, just, just adding them in my head from looking at the, the pass-on notes, what we have started doing is, we keep, if, if I pull, Mr. Amber, if I pull you over, right, I'm gonna make some notes, um, that I have pulled you over, what car you were driving, your tag number, your license number, we do all of those notes. If we're finding that we have repeat offenders for these fictitious tag violations, we're charging them with the misdemeanor crime, and they're going to jail. Um, we just started that this month, we've taken eight, just in, just in Indian Trail, we've gotten, and we've taken eight to jail, um, and towed those vehicles, so, I mean, it's, unfortunately, you know, it's, if you ever get hit by one of those folks and they don't have insurance, if you've ever battled insurance, your own insurance, it's, it's not fun, so, and, and like I say, if one of those folks hits you, then you're responsible for it, and there's absolutely nothing that, you know, if they don't have insurance on their vehicle, and nothing's valid on it, it's, it's, it's kinda hard to fight. But that, did that answer your question? Awesome.
This is a lot like the, uh, social security cards too, isn't it? But being duplicated like med, except you got a lot more, um, liabilities as far as cars and hitting people and that sort of thing.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, I tell you, I've been hit by uninsured motor, motorists, so best thing you can do is have uninsured motor, motorists coverage.
Yes.
Thank you, Andy.
Yes, sir.
Brings us to our consent agenda, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? unanimous. All right, we don't have a public hearing tonight, so we're gonna move down to.
We do.
Mr. Mayor, you do, pedestrian plan.
I'm sorry, pedestrian plan presentation and potential adoption, Mr. Hunt Singer. People are paying attention in here today, that's good, I like that.
Well, we, we finally made it, uh, it's been a long process to get this plan, uh, to this point, um, uh, I think we started, uh, basically started the process, took about a year, and got done with the actual plan, uh, in December, and unfortunately, uh, sent it to DOT, and it went into the abyss, uh, for about six months, and so now we've just found out, just recently, that the plan can be adopted, so that's why we're here tonight, to formally give you a summary of the plan, and then, uh, open a public hearing, and then, you know, you can either choose to close it or not, and then formally adopt it afterwards. All right, any questions so far? All right, so, uh, tonight, we have a representative from Stan Tech, there's our third-party consultant that did the plan, his name is Tim Tressalavi, if I hope I said it right, uh, and he was the project manager, and he's gonna, uh, come up and do that presentation for you.
Wonderful, uh, yes, Timothy Tressalavi, I'm a transportation planner with Stan Tech, I was fortunate enough to kind of facilitate this planning process, done this many times with Integrated Mobility Division, formerly known as the Bicycle and Pedestrian Division, um, with NC DOT, um, I'm, I'm really happy to be here on behalf of the whole team, including, um, staff on, on our end, and our subconsultant, J.S. Lane, Scott Lane, um, to give you what is hopefully like, six minutes, total, um, but a lot of people involved, a lot of agencies, a lot of coordination, a lot of different outreach opportunities, so, um, I'm fortunate enough to stand here on their behalf, but they gave us a lot of good intel along the way. Uh, our timeline was, in fact, somewhere around February twenty-twenty-three until now, and yes, there was a draft plan in December, I can't believe that, um, it took like a good four and a half months of review, but it did, unfortunately, there's, uh, like twelve to eighteen of these going on at any given time, and if you're not in the front of the line, then you're in the back of the line, and that's kind of what happened to us, but we made it all the way through, there was the awesome timeline. Um, if you're not familiar with like phase one planning, we kind of use jargony terms like that all the time, phase one means we're just getting started, like it's about lots of projects, there's many of them, it's about a network, and our overall purpose was to get policies and standards in place that kind of help facilitate safe walking and biking environments, like slower speed limits on our streets, uh, and also get a list of prioritized projects to kind of begin the infrastructure phase. The high priority projects then, from this process, go into phase two, the engineering design, not me, but play my colleagues, uh, and then if you're lucky enough to get through phase two design, you get into actual construction, so the good news is, I don't have to build anything, uh, the hard news is that nothing gets built on my end, sorry. Lots of outreach involved, we had many different phases of virtual engagement and in-person engagement, uh, the Paws in the Park event, probably the most fun outreach engagement event I've ever been a part of, and I got to pet dogs the whole time, it was incredible. Uh, had a project website, a lot of visitors, visitors, with an online survey and interactive map, so different ways for people to engage, we held some listening sessions, uh, with some attendees, we call them focus group listening sessions, and then the two public events where we just kind of bombarded people and asked them questions, best way to get, um, really good intel about where people are walking and biking, uh, rather than holding a big stuffy meeting and asking them to come to you, that never works. So, the good news is, we're, we're all good, it's compliant with NC DOT content standards, that means they kind of guide what it should look and feel like, there's five chapters, it's consistent across the whole state. I promise you, it is fun to read, that those quotes are intentional, it's fun, 'cause it's, um, plain language. Uh, chapter one is all about the visioning goals, we refined your two thousand nine plan, uh, the, a little bit about the planning process, why we bother doing this, and then the benefits of walking, very general, but there's a lot of research behind, it's more than just, uh, going to the grocery store. Two is about existing conditions, there's a lot of review and analyses, there's a lot of previous plans and policies to go through, I know you guys love policies, right? It's exciting, well, imagine reading a whole bunch of them and summarizing them real quick, that's, that's kind of what we did. A little bit of community characteristics shown there as well, about the people in Indian Trail walking and biking, public engagement was by far the best part of this planning process, including going to the people on two different occasions and just kind of chatting with them. Recommendations, there's a lot of lines on a map, most of them are dashed, those means recommended, uh, the network plan is supposed to look like this, it's spaghetti, but the idea is, you're not building one thing, you're saying, "This is what we'd like to have built in a vision plan," some of it will be built by the town, some of it will be built by NC DOT, some by private partners, from, some by redevelopment opportunities, so the idea is, it's all there, it's just a matter of when some of these get triggered, uh, and constructed, and by whom, but partnerships is kind of how you make that happen. There are six priority projects there in the black rectangles, those would be the ones that are kind of more significant, more timely, more near-term, those would be the ones and candidates that go towards that phase two engineering design kind of ideas. And then lastly, the policies and programs is the best part, because it's all the complement to, um, actual construction, right? Everyone has to talk about the infrastructure, but there's the education, the encouragement, the enforcement, the equity, and the evaluation process that all feeds into making this a great place to walk and bike and get around. Sorry, I just love multimodal planning, it's kind of what I do. Uh, chapter five implementation is, how do we get started? Uh, the first question I always hear is, "So now what?" Uh, so good, we gave you five things, including, "Let's endorse and adopt this plan, uh, let's share it with all the regional stakeholders to make sure they have a copy and they understand what that network looks like, make sure it aligns with their network," uh, spoiler alert, it does, that was my whole job, uh, and then, looking at your high priority projects, those six locations, and making sure we can get those programmed through the responsible parties, I think four of the six were NC DOT maintained roads, I think two of them are yours. Uh, get your identifying grants and regional partners, we can help you with that, other people can help you with that, there's, uh, stakeholders in the community, in the regional CRTPO and Carolina Thread Trail that can help you with that as well, and then for the really, really, really high priority projects that make its way through that process, get your local match commitments, your ten percent or your twenty percent moving forward, those are your steps, our steps, sorry, not yours, ours. Uh, so congratulations, this is the first time I've worked with a community that's done this three times, three times, your PED Plan two thousand nine, your bike plan two thousand eleven, and now your updated PED Plan in two thousand twenty-four, that's incredible, uh, that really should be celebrated, but, um, NC DOT's been doing this for twenty years now, they've done two-hundred-and-sixty-six of these all told, and you've had three of them, way to go, amazing, I'm done. Six minutes. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Todd?
So this thing's about a hundred pages long?
No, sir.
It's had like.
Seventy-four.
The last chapter started on page seventy-five, I thought it said.
Yeah, and, and it was about two pages long, so seventy-four, graphic-heavy, fun to read.
I just wondered, I mean, you, you got seventy.
Let's call it seventy-eight.
And I hadn't seen any of them.
I can email you, I can email you a copy.
Yeah, I'd like to have a copy, I mean, before, I mean, if we're gonna eventually vote on this thing, I'd like to see it before I vote on it.
It's actually on our project website too, which is, um, boy, I should know this off the top of my head, and I don't, oh, man, embarrassing. I'm gonna email to you. Other questions? Fun to read.
Well, thank you for your presentation, Todd, you gonna come up and?
All right, so, um, good question, Todd, we, again, we just got this approved by DOT, so this is the first meeting to it, so yes, if y'all want to, uh, review it, and, and carry on the public hearing, that's great, that's fine with us, uh, or you can adopt it tonight, that's really up to y'all, so, but, we literally just got this approved by DOT, and that's why you haven't got a copy.
I'll, I'll leave it up to council.
Okay.
We can, we can vote on it next meeting, just.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, just start the public hearing now, and then carry on.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, but everybody, we'll just postpone it till next meeting.
I mean, we, we waited six months, we can wait more, this is okay.
That's good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think the clerk has a comment.
I think, do you want to open public comments?
Okay, we do not have, I'm sorry, let's open and close public comments, uh, because, can I get a motion to open and close public comments?
Just open.
All right, so motion to open public comments.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, now cl, motion to close.
So do we?
Motion to recess it to the next meeting.
Okay, to recess it till next, to the next meeting, there you go.
Yes, motion to recess till the first meeting in July.
Okay, all right, all in favor? Unanimous, okay, thank you, um, so. Okay. All right. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Thank you. So we're done with that, I'm assuming. Now let's move on to old business. Indian Trail Complete Street. Mr. Huntzinger, you going to stay there?
All right, so I'm here tonight, Mayor Council, to give you an update on the Indian Trail Complete Street project. I apologize, I may get a little tongue-tied here. There's a lot of information. I had to do some digging because a lot of this is, you know, consultants talking to consultants. I don't always get involved in the trappings of, you know, we're waiting on this, we're waiting on that. So I had to go back and check, get some dates and everything else. So I'm going to do my best here to get through this. All right, so we're going to talk about eight items tonight. Right-of-way update, construction phase delays. We're going to go over those and tell you why we're, you know, we didn't make the May 24th deadline we wanted to make on the right-of-way. Underground utilities, adding Navaho Trail to the project, additional cost items for the future, and project budget as of currently it is right now, and then moving, how we're moving forward, and if we want to have a discussion about Duke Energy. All right, it's the project. You've seen that. Very familiar. It's a public meeting map. So that's what it looks like. That's the boundaries. All right, so right-of-way update right now. We're at 16 parcels. They're kind of outstanding. Now, that's basically nine property owners that own that 16. Appraisals have been completed, except for Navaho Extension Parcels, which I will explain later. Offers have been completed. Everybody has their offer, except for those Navaho Parcels, and I'll explain later. But we are still within budget, which is a good thing, and I think we'll continue to be within budget, at least in the right-of-way phase. All right, so construction phase. So we have several things been going on the last few months. One is the county CIP. Remember, they are doing a CIP project within our project because they're wanting to update the sewer system out there that's not along Indian Trail Road, but off Indian Trail Road, off the side streets. And while they started looking at that, they figured, why don't we upgrade some water main stuff? It's very little bit of water main, I think, if I remember correctly, but most of it's sewer. So unfortunately, the survey that we have is several years old. And so when they started looking into getting us done, they had to add survey stuff. So I'll talk about that in a minute. So other items, we're also needing additional survey. I'll talk about that. And then private utility design, that's all our underground utilities. Talk about that process. And then right-of-way offers, the holdovers. And we've talked a little bit about that tonight already. So county, so we pressed the survey from the consultant on April 3rd. And we, as you can see, the survey was just completed June 13th. So we've been waiting for two months for these added items. And most of this was missing info, like manhole locations. Now, some of it wasn't technically, a couple of them weren't technically the surveyor's fault. The CIP project the county's doing is a little bit outside our boundary of our project area. So obviously, those manholes were not taken into account. Also, the elevations of the manholes were not taken into account because, again, we wasn't doing sewer upgrades in our project. Of course, with the county, when you're doing sewer, new sewer tie-ins to manholes, you've got elevation. So they had to go back and get elevations. Town Center Waterline, again, that's a brand-new water line I got put along Indian Trail Road. And for whatever reason, their ASBILs is not computing with our survey. Eagle did ASBILs for that water line. And for whatever reason, I don't know the ins and outs, but it just wasn't computing. So that had to be looked at again. And then again, just now getting that survey two weeks ago. So now that they have it, they are moving forward with the design of the rest of their design. They've got some of it done, but they couldn't get all of it because of these missing items. And so now, based on their time, they need to do the design, give it to county to review it, and then address any comments the county makes, we're looking at the design not being done till August 30th. And that is going to hold up our package, and I'll explain that in a little bit. So that's one delay. Second delay is, we had other items that were not in the survey. So again, the consultant tied this in with the same survey request that was done April 3rd. The Town Center entrance, remember, they just built their entrance not too long ago. Well, our survey didn't have that entrance in. And plus, they haven't, they hadn't recorded their plat for the Town Center project itself. And for some reason, the county sat on that for, I think, six to nine months. And so our appraiser did not realize that that was actually a recorded plat. Appraisal got done without that. So they gave them the wrong offer number. So all that had to be redone. So again, having to wait on the survey pushed all that back. So we don't have Town Center right-of-way yet in front of their property because of it, but we're getting there. Navaho Trail, missing utilities. Again, not sure why. The survey missed a couple of utilities. Had to be addressed. So that held up the appraisals for Navaho. Again, now, and those items, we're still waiting. But I'm pretty sure we're getting them fairly soon, but I just can't give you a date. All right. Next, private utilities. All right, this is all your underground utilities. All right, we've got eight companies out there that have to do design work. Well, we started engaging them in fall of 2022. And we've gotten six. Now, the six are the ones we engaged back in the fall, so that's a good thing. They did get done within that timeframe, even though it was very long. The other two companies is the gas company. Unfortunately, with the new water main that was put in, there's some conflicts we found late in the game, or the consultant found late in the game. So this gas, the gas main out there is going to have to be moved a little bit. Seagra, which is a fiber company, I had no idea they even existed. They actually have stuff out there that evidently was put in between the time we took over, before we took over the road, evidently they went in there and did that during the NC DOT encroachment. But for whatever reason, their junction boxes were not on the survey. So but we've gotten contact with them. They should be done next week on their design. So we're close with those. The UBO plans, which is what that's all entails, those eight companies. So those are eight companies. You've got Duke Energy, Spectrum, Windstream, MCNC, Gas, Contra, Duke Energy Fiber is actually out there, and Seagra. So a lot of moving parts. Again, design is about done, which is a good thing. We don't have to wait on that. But I'll give you an example of the plans. And that's just one sheet of the project. So again, very complicated project, a lot of moving parts. So sometimes we just can't control things. All right, now right-of-way holdovers. We've had offers to people since January, March, between the January and March timeframe this year. They have had their offers. Now, some have attorneys, and the property owners have been talking back and forth with their consultant, but the attorneys are not talking back and forth. And so that's caused delays on a few, not all, a lot, but a few of them. And so we're still in the process of that. And some of those have not gotten notices yet. That will probably have to get notices if we can't rectify within the next week or so. And so just to be aware of that. Navaho Trail Extension Design, we got done with that in January 2024. Appraiser started the process, but again, as we talked about the survey, some things got missed. Then it was the whole combination of trying to figure out how to do the appraisal between the two projects, which is complicated. And I'll talk about that in a minute. But of course, but we're hoping to wrap up the process and get the right-of-way to y'all, a little bit of right-of-way to y'all, August 13th, council meeting. And then hopefully, right-of-way package and everything, once we get to that 30-day window with the ones that are kind of holding out, hopefully to get the package ready and have it sent out September 1st. Again, I'm throwing dates out there, hoping to get to them, but I can't guarantee that will be the case. But anyway, just so you know. And that's just a, Navaho, it's actually showing now the underground. We are putting underground into the roadway itself and then going back aerial. That's because it's so narrow through there, we can't continue to run the aerial, Duke Energy aerial overheads along that roadway without impacting more property. So it makes sense. We've got to put sewer through there anyway, because there's an old four-inch sewer line out there that these people are tied on to, that obviously the county wants to upgrade to eight-inch. So again, we've got that, we've got that design moving forward, and that's all in place as far as the Navaho design. Just the appraisals we're waiting on. So just want to let you all know, we are, we are going to move forward and put this Navaho Trail Extension Project into the Indian Trail Complete Street Project. And here's other reasons why. Right-of-way appraisals, it gets complicated when you've got two projects right beside each other and you're having to do appraisals for each project. Because one appraisal's got to talk to the other appraisal. And I've found out, I've learned a lot about that process because these appraisers don't want to write something in there, sign off on it, on a project that they don't for sure it's going to get built. Even though I could sit there and tell them, well, we got a CIP ordinance, we've got funding, that's still not a guarantee. You know, a council could come up and say, well, we don't want to build it anymore. So it's better to go ahead and put it all in one. That way, the appraiser, all he has to do now, he's been working on the appraisal, but all he has to do is a minor edits, make it to one project, and the appraisal itself will coincide with each other. And it'll make life easier, negotiate with these three property owners. Underground utilities, again, we don't want to do overhead through there because we have to buy more right-of-way, and we may have to buy out a building, and we don't want to do that. So it's easy enough to stub out. We've got a junction, if you go back, there's a junction box right here, manhole box, for the underground Duke Energy. So it's easy enough to stub out through there, run a, there's a transformer box right there, and then they're going to put another one at the end, and you're done with it. And everything gets inside the right-of-way, you don't have to buy more property. That's second good reason. Third is obviously, you got one contractor doing the work. You don't take the risk of bidding it out and having a second contractor win the bid on the Navaho part, and you got two contractors talking to each other, trying to tie in things that are very complicated, meaning underground, sewer, and everything else. So just makes life easier, put it all in there. And then cost savings-wise, construction right now is estimated at about $700,000, $750,000 for Navaho. You put this in there with everything else, you're going to get a better price. It'll get, by the time you get the line items together, you're going to have a lower price than $750,000 if you lump it in. So you're saving the, you're saving the taxpayer a little bit of money. So if the council doesn't have any objections to that, and we can talk about that at next meeting, but that's what we would do. We would come to you, back to you, take away the CIP ordinance from Navaho, and put all the money into the CIP ordinance of Indian Trail Complete Street. But that will be done in July. If there's no, and it could be discussed in July as well. We'll do it as a discussion item. If y'all want to talk about it then, we'll talk about it then. But that's kind of where we're moving forward right now. I've talked to NC DOT about this. They're okay with it. Again, we won't be, we won't be able to do reimbursables for Navaho part. It'll be a separate section in the bid tab. But we can put it in there, write the contract, and we got to do it anyway with the county water and sewer. I mean, the county's paying for this, for their upgrades. So we got to do that anyway. So you might as well do it for other items. So either way, the contract's got to be written that way. All right, now, in doing that, there is, we are going to incur a little bit of additional cost because we, now that we were putting Navaho back into Indian Trail, we've got to kick, we've got to do the state road control plan. Doing Navaho itself, we wasn't over an acre. It's a disturbance. But now that we're going to put it in there, it gets lumped in, we've got to change those plans back to state standards, which is NCWQ. So that's an extra cost, plus just putting the plan into the design plan itself is an extra cost as well. Utility consultant that Arsenage has subbed out too, that's done all the coordination with all these eight utilities, their contract was only for 12 months. They've obviously spilled over 12 months. They've asked for extra funds. That is within that $55,000, just FYI. Right-of-way consultant right now thinks he's got enough money, that he hasn't used any other items. I don't think he's, has to do any adjustments or ask for any money at this point. Just so you know. All right, so that's the ordinance right now for Navaho. It's all 2021 street bond funds. So it's $90,000 for design. Right-of-way was $300,000. Again, I don't have the appraisals yet, so I'm not sure we're going to be within that $300,000. But we do have savings. I'm thinking we're going to have savings on the Complete Street, so that may help offset that. And then construction phase is $750,000, like I stated earlier. All right, in July, hopefully, July, August timeframe, we're going to come back to you and talk about some additional costs. And I mentioned a little bit about this at the budget workshop earlier this year. But additional construction costs, bid-wise, we may have some. I'm trying to get more accurate costs. We've got to put in the underground into the bid form as well. I don't have that done yet. When we get all that in place, I should have pretty solid numbers for you in July. Signal design cost, there's a little bit of signal design. We wanted to do a overhead light at one of the mast arms on the intersections. You know, we're going to have our street lights, but we wanted one at each intersection. They didn't do that initially. I made them put it in there. So there's, I think, five grand additional costs just to put those two in there on each of the intersections that have mast arms. Sign relocation, we've talked about that. There is some additional costs to that. Street lighting, again, we don't want to use Duke Energy street lights because they're just standard. We want this to be a unique downtown. So we're going with a private system. We've got a cost for that. And then we'll talk about that. And then receptacles and benches, I mean, that's trash benches. You want to put those along the roadway eventually, so people have that walkability feel of downtown. All right, right now, the CIP ordinance, as I stated, you've seen this slide before in the last update. Again, it's in the ordinance. Nothing's changed. Just letting you know. Move forward, again, hoping to get right-of-way done in August 2024 for the reasons I already explained. Construction authorization, it's going to take probably a month. Once we get the package, DOT has to go to Raleigh. They have to review all the right-of-way numbers, that all the offers. I'm figuring that's going to be a month. So you're probably leaking into October for construction authorization. And then we let the project get this winter with a two-year timeframe. Now, the two-year timeframe, just so you know, I don't think the project would take a year and a half, but I'm throwing an extra six months in there because I don't have any control of these private utilities. And you've got one that's got to put, you've got two that's got to take down poles. One is Duke and one is Windstream. And Windstream doesn't have a good track record of doing things in a timely manner, unfortunately. So again, I have no control over stuff like that. And so that could leak. You could be waiting six months for them just to drop poles. So I'm throwing two years in there, even though it shouldn't take a year and a half if everything ran smoothly, which you know it's not in this complicated a project. It may be more than two years. I don't know. But that's two years to me is about right right now. All right, so I won't continue the slide, the next slide, unless y'all do want to talk about Duke Energy poles and what they're doing out there right now.
Talk about which part?
Duke Energy poles.
Duke Energy poles. There was a...
The poles they're putting in.
Yeah, there was, there was an email or something going around about, you know, the fact that they were putting in the new poles. And now we're a couple, six months later, we're going to be putting them...
Right down the road, you can see the poles.
Yeah, I know. So, so I, just so you know, I've talked to them. But unfortunately, Duke's a big company, and there's one department that's dedicated to upgrading infrastructure. And they don't talk to any others. At least, that's the way I took it on the phone call. They didn't come out and say that. But, you know, and they've got these things planned three years in advance. This thing was probably designed three years ago. The wheel, the train keeps moving and they don't stop. And unfortunately, it's a bad timing. Unfortunately, that's all I can say to that. Go ahead.
Well, I guess the question would be is, they put them up, it's all new, and then it's kind of like, we want to take them down. So how far along are we engaged to where possibly we don't do underground utilities? Are we too far along to go back from that?
Yeah, you're too far along. Here, I'll put a slide. I just threw out some bullet points here. Again, you're too far along in the sense of, okay, you're about at the finish line. And so now you're going to incur additional design costs. You're going to have to go back to all these utility companies and do... to all these utility companies and do redesigns. So you're talking probably six to 12 months. Rightway consultant costs are going to go up, because 16 parcels are not, will not have enough PUE for the overhead. And the overhead, obviously, is on the right-hand side, so that's where I got the 16 parcels, because we wanted, we weren't going to do underground, we were going to do it on the right-hand side, going towards the open road, right? Well, that's 16 parcels, you have to go back and do, the rightway consultant has to go back and do the offers again. It's a domino effect. So you're talking about a 12-month delay in the project, at least. Utility construction costs, harder to qualify, you know, what it will take, what's the savings? Properties, I think you've got one property, maybe two, that you might have to buy out. And I don't think we want to buy out properties.
I mean, you know, it looks nice, and we got, we're using $5 million from the state grant towards that, so it's not town money, but...
You're right.
I just wonder how far are we along, because if we didn't pull them, maybe we could pull that $5 million into Indian Trail Road Phase Two, so...
Right.
But if we're too far along, then it's just, that's where, that's, it is what it is.
Well, what's sad is, on Phase Two, I mean, those poles that they're putting in, they're still going to have to be moved.
Yeah, I know.
They've got to be moved back. So you're going to move them either way, that's what's...
Some utilities have to go underground anyways, right? So you still have to put the boxes...
Well, and another thing, look at this, and I put it on here, important, future development. You know, our future development for downtown is buildings up front, parking in the back, right? Well, they have to put those underground, because you can't keep, keep the poles there on the building, right? So are you going to wait for every, for that, this, this area to develop all the way through, to finally get underground? No. Because then you're going to, they're going to have to go back, mess up a brand-new road to put the underground in. So it's a lot of, it's a lot of impacts to your complete city that you've just built that will cause that domino effect, if you don't do the underground now.
Would that be sad on...
Let's go, Todd, add...
I have two more questions.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So far. The water line over here with the town center...
Yes, sir.
How much of that's been installed? Are we still going to have a delay from the railroad track to the Johnny K's intersection, or, because it's supposed, wasn't it supposed to go from the Johnny K's intersection all the way to South Fork?
Yeah, yeah, so Phase Two of that is basically the railroad tracks to Johnny, the corner of Johnny K's.
That hadn't been done yet.
That hasn't been done yet, because county has held them up, because they can't get an easement...
Okay.
From the corner property.
Okay, okay. So we're waiting on, will we have to wait on that before the road?
Well, I think, while we're in utilities, you remember, I've talked about the utility part, it's going to probably take six months to a year, I mean, they'll be doing that within that timeframe. So we just have to work with them to have, give them access to our project.
Now, when you say adding Navaho Trail Extension...
Yes.
Does that mean we're going to do it at the same time as the road?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that'll be, okay.
Yeah, yeah, all same time.
Yeah, yeah, I'm for that.
You know, burying the lines in Phase Two, I guess that might be a little early, but we need to try to find money to bury the lines on Phase Two, don't we?
If, if y'all want to do that.
I mean, because it wouldn't, it wouldn't look clean, would it?
Well, that's, I mean, we have concepts of what it looks like with the poles there, because I, my assumption was, we probably didn't want to spend that type of money to do underground through those sections, but...
But it's going to be underground for the downtown plan, doesn't it?
It is, from Gribble to Liberty Lane, but then it goes back, and then, and then you're not only going on a couple parcels from Unionville to Matthews before it goes back aerial. So you're not going all underground through that, that limit you saw on the, on the project limit public media map. Yeah, we're, like, yeah, that whole stretch at 500 or 700 feet on Unionville and Matthews, we're not going all underground there, it's just to the first set of parcels, those big commercial parcels, then it goes back aerial.
Thank you.
Okay.
Clarence?
I have two questions, I'm not sure if you can, if one is for the county, but the mast arms for the signals, are they two per intersection or one?
It depends.
On the design.
But for, for these, we only have two for, for each intersection. But you can't have more, yes.
Well, but I, I was in one town, I'm not sure, recently, and they actually only had one.
Yeah.
And they, so I didn't know if that would save a little bit of money, or if that's already in a design.
It's already been designed.
Okay.
We, we've got 90% plans actually in NCOT review right now, I'd hate to go back and do it.
And the other thing is, you mentioned in presentation that the, you have a four-inch sewer pipe going through right now, and then they would upgrade...
Going through where Navaho would be going through.
Right, and they would upgrade to an eight-inch. I don't know much about sewer pipe. Would that be efficient, or would they have to go back and later on?
No, that's a one-time deal.
Add or...
Yeah, it's just like, the, the, the old sewer line that's along Indian Trail Road, that's an eight-inch line, they're, they, their CIP doesn't call for upgrading that at all. You normally don't ever have to upgrade eight-inch, they don't want to go any larger than that. I don't know the specifics on why, but you hardly ever see more than eight-inch lines.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a couple comments, if I could add. We appreciate the council's patience as we work through this, as you've seen from the multicolored slide, this is a very difficult project on a very tight footprint. We're also working with the private industry and subcontractors that we can't control. We've gotten money from the hospital and Indian Trail Town Center. The other thing that I'll mention to you is, we want to tear this street up once, and not build it, and then have the county or someone come in and tear it up again. They're doing a very similar project to this in downtown Concord, which has a whole lot more resources than we do, and it has taken a while. The last thing I'll mention to you, we have called this Indian, or Navaho Trail Extension. At some point, we will come to you to see whether you want that to be the official name, or if you want to come up with something else, because there's a process that we will have to do that under.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, we are up next, the occupancy tax education campaign.
Well, after 11 years, 11 years, the North Carolina Legislature gave you all the authority to put an occupancy tax on the ballot. And a few months ago, you authorized us to contact the county board of elections, and we have done it, and it's going to be on the November ballot. We are going to be working with a group known as Haven Creative Occupancy, Haven Creative to put together some information, to put out educational information about the occupancy tax. We have a very talented staff here, Abby Ball is simply the best, but there's only one Abby Ball, and she is working at the rate of two people. And so we are at our capacity right now, we need to hire this company to do some temporary work for us. And some of the things we're looking at doing is just some creative messaging, communication plans, you see, some, some posters and stuff like that. And it's very important to talk about what the occupancy tax does and doesn't do. I can remember when it was going on in Charlotte, and people had all kind of crazy notions, and while we don't have a hotel right now, we will have a hotel someday. And there is a provision in state law that limits how much tax can be collected in a county. And Monroe, I don't remember the amount is, but you don't want one city to take up all the capacity. I will mention this in closing, just to remind everybody, occupancy tax, it covers lodging, and it can only be used for tourism-type activities, such as helping fund park improvements, because we get a lot of softball tournaments here, or maybe a community center, or things of that nature. So I just wanted to pass that on to you for your information. We're also talking to our neighbors in Stallants, to see if they want to do something cooperatively with, with us and with this company. So we'll keep you informed. Okay? Any questions?
Clarence?
Mike, as a council, is there anything that we can do to spread the news, that will help spread the news?
Absolutely. Once we start getting this information out, we would appreciate you speaking to your friends and neighbors. We'll have some copies, if you would like to distribute anything. It's very important, as a town, we can't say we endorse it, or we don't endorse it, it's just, we have to, we have to provide facts on what the occupancy tax does and doesn't do, and, and, and as council members, y'all can be the best ambassadors for the town. Yes, sir.
Well, the town can't necessarily promote it, but is that what the consulting firm's going to do?
No, they're just going to provide factual, objective information. They're going to do basically creative-type artwork, because we don't have the capacity or the time to do it internally. And so that's why we're using those folks, they've got the capacity, they've got the experience.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, what's the cost of it?
Like $50, $5,200.
$5,200, yeah.
Yeah, which is not, not...
Yeah.
Not...
And, and once this thing gets rolling, you know, if there are groups, or neighborhood groups that, you know, we could have this information, if people had questions, we could go out and, and provide that information.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve entering into contract with Haven Creative for the occupancy tax education campaign.
Okay. All in favor? Unanimous.
All right.
Very good. That brings us down to new business, street acceptance. Turn that over to you.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to talk about the road in general and the condition. I wanted to see if it meets Indian Trail R standard. Again, I'm, I'm not the road police, and I'm not the, you know, the guy that knows everything about the road, but I've been up and down that road several times the last couple days, just to even check it out, since we got our agendas. And it just doesn't seem like it's up there, it seems like it's about ready to be surfaced, resurfaced.
Yeah, and that's the issue we have with Indian Trail Road. I mean, Indian Trail Road hadn't been resurfaced since 2000.
Right.
And we had, we had to take, we had to take that in consideration, are, do we want to take over a road that we know needs help? But we knew this project was coming, so that kind of helped facilitate that. What we wanted to do was kind of work with DOT on the swap, when we was doing Indian Trail, which is a test nut, with some funding. We got a little bit, got a little bit there, and then it kind of fell through, because they wanted us to throw a bunch of money on that existing parkway, which we weren't going to do. But Unionville, the main reason, more than anything, is that section at 700 feet you just saw on the, on our plan that we had to improve, if they keep it as a state road, then we, we can't put the sewer in the road, and we've got to push the sewer outside the sidewalk area. Well, that again, impacts the bank, impacts the guy behind the bank, the little guy that owns the strip mall behind the bank, the library. So we're going to put sewer manholes and sewer outside of rightway, because DOT doesn't allow it anymore. Now, I'll tell you what doesn't make any sense, is they sit, they sit there and tell you, you cannot put sewer in the middle of a road, but what do they do when the county approves a subdivision, and they have to go in there and accept the streets, because the county doesn't accept streets? Every bit of those streets got sewer in the middle of the road. Tell me how that makes sense? But, but that's the problem, is it, we can control that area, and, and Unionville would be, but to, to Indian Trail Road to 74, we wouldn't take the rest of it. But we would control that area, yes, it doesn't need help, probably. We are getting some improvements from exchange in that area, so you're going to get some widening in there and all that, kind of for free, pretty much, so that'll get improved. You won't have but a small stretch between that and Plyler that won't be paved in, pretty soon, in the next few, couple of years. I think, how long you think Plyler is going to take, development-wise, townhomes? About a year, maybe? One more year? So those would be improved, we could probably throw a little bit of money and resurface up to that point from our project, even though there's a little gap there. And then all you got is basically from Plyler to 74, that again, probably needs to be resurfaced in the future, but can we live with it so we can own it and do what we want with it? That's the, that's the upside, I think.
Yeah, I didn't realize that we were tying it into the Complete Street project, so...
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense to me now.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we're actually, we're going to come back with y'all with some other ones for the subdivisions, they've actually already paved, and the next one, but we want to go ahead and get this and move forward, so we can get to their board.
Thank you.
All right, no problem. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Melanie. Do we need to make a motion to, to...
Yes.
Accept this particular item, or...
Yes, yes.
That was pulled?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, go right here.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept Unionville Indian Trail Road as the town will take ownership.
Okay, no? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous.
All right, thank you, Council Mayor.
Okay, brings us to discussion items, enforcement of social media guidelines. Ms. Cox.
At the last council meeting, I was instructed to draft some language as to how the social media policy could be enforced. That's what's in front of you. The idea is that it'll be placed on the agenda at a meeting, upon the request of the mayor or a council member, and then the particular posts will be discussed, and the inaccurate information addressed, and then, if appropriate, a motion can be made directing the town manager to prepare a post to post on the town's Facebook page, a statement correcting the misleading or inaccurate information, and the council obviously has to vote on that prior to the manager posting anything.
Okay. Any questions?
You have this as item number 10 under conduct with the media, but it doesn't address anything said to the media. But I was wondering if you couldn't add that, in the event of information's posted on social media or given to any media outlet? Because that way, if someone's on TV, radio, newspaper, and they say something's incorrect, that's just the same as saying it on social media.
What's that got to do with our social media policy? We don't control the media themselves.
It's, excuse me, I get interrupted, it's, it's not a, it's not a social media policy necessarily, as you have it under conduct with the media and use of electronic and social media, so it's under the category of all three.
Right, that's, that's the heading of the entire section, and then we, based on instructions from previous meetings, we revised the policy as it dealt specifically with social media. I mean, that's up to the council, if you want this to...
I mean, if we're interested in truth, I think all the council would want to add that.
I mean, it can read however you all want to read.
Well, the fact is that there's been members of the council that have abused social media and misled people, and that's what has brought us to where we are today. And thank goodness, the Supreme Court has ruled that no longer can people be blocked, and no longer can they block responses to the social media to rebuttal what those folks have said. So what this is all about, as I understand it, is that when somebody puts something on social media that is not completely true, skewing the facts a different way, that, then we will come out and address it later on. That's what specifically this is about, is referring to our council and the information that they put out on their, sometimes it looks like propaganda, to the people in the town, that would confuse the people and make the, them think that we were doing something detrimental to the public.
Right, this is more of a self-policing, where if the media posts an article or puts out a story, like, none of us have any control over that.
Exactly. And exactly what is your question, Todd, to her? I mean, we're talking about social media, so you're talking about other media.
I was just saying, it's, you know, if, I mean, it's like, someone says something up here, gives out disinformation, I mean, you can fact-check them, or you can put it on, you can put it on the agenda. I mean, council put anything on the agenda for discussion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, you know, I mean, I don't have a problem if you want to put something about social media, but I was just saying, if you want to make a policy, you know, why not do social media, but you should just do all media. I mean, you know, I mean, for image of the town, the last thing you want, someone running to any kind of media outlet and just giving out any kind of misinformation or any opinion that would misrepresent the town. So I, I was just thinking that it would seem like it would be prudent to add that language. I mean, that way, it would also be, as part of the enforcement. I mean, that way, it would also be as part of the enforcement.
Mr. Gay, hold on a minute. What do, how do you feel about that?
I mean, I know, I was sent a, a couple of Facebook posts where, just recently, Marcus McIntyre was quoted as saying something at, as a meeting, like, two or three meetings ago. And clearly, you know, he hasn't been on, on council since December, and who knows even who runs that page? So I don't know if, like, that type of situation is what you had in mind? Without knowing a specific example, but I just know in a, in a case like that, that would be difficult to correct, because we don't know who's behind that page.
Well, let me finish, Todd, then you ask.
Go ahead.
I think what you're saying is, is we don't, this is all we control, right here. This is what we can control. We can't really control what goes on the media, or what the media does, because that really has nothing to do with, with, with us as far as what's a statement from the town, or about, or for. Is, am I correct, or...
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, each of you is individual, you know, council members, and the mayor can post any statement however you want, as an individual.
Well, another question is, what difference really does it make? I mean, whether you added the me, whether you added the, the media to it or not? Does that, does that, does that water it down, or does that, is it just more words in the, in the, uh, in what you've written?
I don't think it waters it down, as long as, um, we're clear that it, it would be a council member right making this statement to the media.
Well, okay, well, I thought that was to be said.
Right, okay.
If it's, as long as it's a, it's a council member, uh, talking to media, it doesn't really matter. I mean...
Right. I think we can just change that first sentence and, and put, "In the event information is posted in the media," and, and strike "social," if that's the desire of council.
Or if you put "social media" and the me, or the media and the media, both.
Right.
Put both of, put both of it in there, and I, I don't, I don't see a problem with that. I mean, it discovers everything, Mr. Gay.
You know, I think if somebody's gonna make a statement, and, or they're gonna put it on their social media, and they're contacted by the media, if they refuse to talk to the media, then how is this gonna be corrected? And we've had that situation, where they'll put information out there on the street that's not right, and they refuse to talk to the media about it. So, we have to, we have to police somebody who tries to abuse, um, they call it rope-a-dope in, in boxing. Try to change the subject, refuse to answer questions, uh, and it looks bad on the town.
Well, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll just give you my opinion on that. I don't think you can, you can't, you can't make an opinion on something that's something that somebody doesn't do. You can have an opinion that it's not right, but you can't say, you can't make somebody, or you can't tell somebody, or you correct somebody on something they didn't say.
Well, if you wanna be clear and transparent, then you should explain yourself when you, as a public official, make comments and put posts out there.
I don't think anybody, um, you know, has to speak to anybody if they wish not to. However, you know, if, if you're putting a statement on, say, your Facebook page or whatever, and it's about what was voted on, or whatever, you're not gonna be able to give every email, every discussion, everything behind closed doors between council persons. So, you know, what might be said is, what you perceive to be inaccurate, it just might not be in your favor. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I think that's little general statements. I mean, we can't help what's said with coffee at the mayor, um, you know, or whatever the town posts. The town posts, they don't always post from the start to beginning of a conversation, they put the highlights in there. So if an individual puts highlights on the, their page, and you, you find that you're angry about it, you know, that's on you. You know, you can't dictate someone's First Amendment right. You know, and I don't think, you know, misleading, I don't think that's an accurate word. I think, you know, inaccurate's a good word, but, you know, but if they're saying something that was part of the decision on a case or what have you, you know, I think that should be left there. And you can't go on someone else's page and start battling them, and undermine them, and bashing them. You know, I think that's inappropriate.
Well, you know, if you got media standing right in front of you and ask you to clarify something, then you refuse.
Again, you don't have to speak to them, if you don't choose to.
All right, hold on a second. Clarence?
I think the answer to that is, if the statement can go through fact and finding and be discovered as wrong, then that's your...
Okay, I'm gonna go one more time down, and that, that's just it. Go ahead.
Uh, we've had an offer from, uh, one of the media outlets to do a forum on the issues that we have here, because it affects every town, really does. And if you've got, if you've got people who misuse the, um, social media, and they refuse to talk to the media, that's not clear and transparent to the town. And when you scare people and make them think that we're gonna bulldoze churches, that we're gonna bulldoze the VFW, and start rumors all around town, uh, at least now, they can't put it out there and then come back a few hours later and block it from everybody. But, uh, this is something that affects everybody nationwide, and I think that, um, you know, that we, we need to be clear and transparent. And if you've got somebody who's, um, not following an ethical standard that we all should, should, uh, follow, and they, um, try to get out of being held accountable for what they say, then that's pretty poor.
All right, that's good. Dennis and Todd, what you had last, last, last up?
I got one more thing, okay. Oh, no, I, I appreciate it, the process, 'cause you've explained how we can fact-check people, and I'm very engaged in that. Um, the, um, but, you know, I did wonder, you, if you have on here, and if it does not provide full and complete accurate information. Well, we put out highlights with the budget, I mean, the manager's report, his snippets. I mean, you get little snippets and pieces of information here, it's just like a vote. You got a motion and a vote. There's no way you can explain the full process of that vote, because you've got committees, you've got in-house emails. So when you sit here and say, "full information," it's just not practical. So, I mean, can you explain, you know, 'cause someone can say, "Well, you know, he didn't post every planning board meeting, he didn't post every parts and rec committee, he didn't meeting, he didn't post everything that was said in the council meeting." It's just kind of, I mean, maybe you can explain that language, but it kinda opens a, you know, kinda, you know, it's kinda real, it's very vague or subjective, almost.
Right, and it's gonna be up to the council to decide whether or not they believe it's, um, you know, full and complete. Obviously, we have meeting minutes, right? And they're supposed to be, um, just an inaccurate summary of what happened at the meeting, but they're not verbatim. And I don't think a social media post would ever be verbatim. I think the key is whether or not the information is accurate or not. Accurate, misleading, or misleading.
Well, I'd like for the mayor to bring up the subject of the conference at Winston-Salem Conference.
Dennis, Dennis. We can go on and on and on and on with this.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm okay. I mean, it's just some of the language, if you change the first thing, add to the media, I'm okay with that. And, you know, it's like the mayor said, it's, you know, I think we've talked about it enough, let's vote.
We, we, let's, that, that's true, let's vote on it, and, um, let's vote on it, council, as is. Is that, is that what council wants to do?
We wanna make the changes.
What now? Does the council wanna change the media, excuse me, the, um...
Posted on media, social media.
Media or so, social media, is that...
Social media slash media.
All right, and, and lastly, this is, you said the perfect thing. You, what you said was, was, it's decided by council, and it has to be decided by the majority of council. And it, it, it is to correct, uh, or to let the whole story be known to the public, period. Whether it be, uh, you know, for whatever, the whole story needs to go, and not half the story, or not part of the story, and it will have to be done by, and agreed on by council. Is that, is that everybody's, okay, so...
I didn't understand it that way. You say the whole story, doesn't say the whole story.
Well, we want the whole story, that, that's what we're wanting. We, we, Todd, we're not, we're not wanting... We're, we're not wanting to, to, to not tell the whole story, we, you know...
He said it's subjective, so the whole story's gonna be left up to the council decision.
Well, that's true.
That's what she said.
That's right.
But important parts shouldn't be left out. You know, if you're telling the town what's going on, even if you summarize, you need to have the important parts of reasons why we made decisions, or if you leave out certain parts, it can change the entire story. So I get, we're not wanting a verbatim transcript, but I do feel like making sure that A, B, and C is all out there so that people know why the decisions were made the way they were.
We just, we just want honesty out there, period. That's most important.
Did you play golf in Winston-Salem?
Uh, but anyway, let's, that...
But I'll make a motion, if that's okay with you.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, um, and Melanie, if I'm not saying this correctly, let me know, but I'm gonna make a motion to approve the changes of the code of contact with the addition of the word "media" in 10, the first, uh, sentence.
Change it.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, to the code of contact.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. All right. That brings us to managers, uh, wait a minute, nope, I wish, okay, no, it's not. Consideration of changing Indian Trail Road's speed limit to 35 miles an hour. Councilmember Barbara, go ahead.
Well, the entire council approved, uh, I guess it's an ordinance, and we added Indian Trail Road to be 25 miles an hour, making the speed limit. Been about, in effect, about 15 days now. Clearly, a lot of people don't like it. It was years ago, when they, just like years ago, they made the national speed limit 55, and you know how that went over. And eventually, they changed it back to make it higher. I mean, there's no safety reason, or any other reason, other than just people wanting to get to where they were going faster. After we lowered the speed limit, I kinda noticed, like, uh, gentlemen said earlier, South Road Road's 35, Indian Trail, Unionville Road's 35, Old Monroe Road is 45 in front of the high school. Rogers Road's 35 in front of the schools, 35 school zone in front of Sun Valley Middle School. The roundabout at Sardis over there that was put in, the speed limit's 35. And it's 35 in front of the school over there. And I got to looking, and, you know, while the staff recommended, and it was referenced lowering the speed limit due to the design of the road. It was my understanding, we wanted to move track it and get rid of congestion. We need, of course, we need a stoplight at Gribble Road, and we need the roundabout, and we need the lanes put in here at the intersection at Johnny K's. Then I got to realizing, what was the difference in the roads that were 35 and the Indian Trail Road design? There's no buffer between the sidewalk and the road. So that means people walking, will be walking right next to the road. You know, and if we leave it designed that way, then I think lowering the speed limit to 25 was the correct decision. I mean, so, I'm not saying that we made a wrong decision, I'm just saying, with that design, I would see the police, and everyone, and everybody, and this fancy binder we got here from summer of 2020, uh, without. But, you know, we're lowering the speed limit, but we don't have any on-street parking that was being taken away, actually. And, so, the sidewalk designed to turn the area into a walkability and bike-riding environment, well, that's a good concept, but the reality is, we just don't have a lot of people walking the sidewalk or riding bikes up and down Indian Trail Road. As a matter of fact, I don't think you can find a business on Indian Trail Road that actually has a bike rack. The town center, if you notice, they put in over there, there's no walkway to the road, there's no bike path to the road. So, and then recently, we found out light rail's not coming to Matthews. Well, that means it's not coming here either, anytime, probably in my lifetime. So, my thing is, is, and I don't even know if it's doable, maybe we're too far, maybe we can't redesign it, but with the thousands of vehicles traveling Indian Trail Road and lowering the speed limit for safety, I don't think it's safe to have people walking right next to the road. Especially with all that traffic coming through, what we're looking at, 15,000 cars. So, my thinking is, is since we got a 10-foot sidewalk, we have 10-foot to work with. Why not do, maybe this isn't doable, maybe this isn't a reason, and, and I'd be more than happy, you know, to let the town manager address this, but maybe we can't change it, but why not a 5-foot sidewalk and a 5-foot buffer, or a 6-foot sidewalk and a 4-foot buffer? That way, you've got that buffer between the road and the sidewalk, just like all these other roads we see in town. So obviously, the buffer is meant there for safety. Or else the DOT and everybody wouldn't design it that way. So I'm just wondering, for safety reasons, maybe we oughta consider, if it's not too late, to redesign the sidewalk and put the speed limit back to 35, since we're interested in moving traffic. Those are slower speed limit, slow us down the traffic, and clearly, it's gonna be more congestion. So, I don't know if it's too late, I don't know, maybe there's another reason why you lower the speed limit, but, you know, I open it up for discussion, in case, maybe we oughta, you know, I'm not saying it's a bad decision, I say maybe there's a better decision to do it that way. So, for safety reasons, I turn it over to you before I make any motion on this or anything, but...
All right.
I like to hear feedback on that.
All right, I'm gonna do a couple things. We're gonna recommend, we'll, you know, we'll play our trump card first. We're gonna recommend that we leave it at 25, and let me explain why, and I'm gonna call on Todd Hunsinger in just a minute, and then Captain Mullis for any comments. I think we're, on Indian Trail Road, we are pretty far down the road. Y'all received an email a few days ago that talked about redesign and further delaying the project. Some of that you have heard tonight, as we've talked about the various complexities of Indian Trail Road. The other thing is, as you start to look at downtowns, and I'm sure all of us have been through many downtowns in North Carolina, typically, that is the area in which traffic is the slowest, because as businesses start to develop, and they will develop as we get the sewer, um, you want your traffic to move more slowly, so people feel... People will drive as fast as they feel safe, so that's why sometimes, when you start to narrow the road through wider sidewalks, you keep your traffic moving at a pace, but not as a fast pace. One of the things that we've talked about here on multiple occasions is, the idea is to give people three opportunities to go from north to south, or south to north. One is Chestnut Parkway. If you look at Chestnut Parkway, they're going gangbusters. I'm amazed at how much progress they're making. So for people that are wanting to get through town without going down Indian Trail Road necessarily, that will be at a higher speed. We've shared with you, they're getting ready to do bridge construction on Wesley Chapel. That will be a higher speed, but for Indian Trail, it is more narrow. We do build the sidewalks wider to try to keep the bicyclists and the, one day, if you get scooters, the scooters that are all over the place, and the walkers and the joggers. I would like to ask Todd Hunsinger to give a couple of comments from an engineering standpoint, and then if the council's willing, just have Captain Mullis talk about it from his perspective.
Thank you, Mike. I think the, the main thing you gotta realize is, we don't put a multi-use path out there for our project, you lose the project. 'Cause that's one of the main reasons why we, we got the project selected, is it's supposed to, the, the original complete street project, remember, was about pedestrian safety. So, and it was, the only reason why you got it approved, 'cause it's in a downtown, it's close to churches. I mean, all those are points that you get when you do the application process. So, if you don't put the multi-use path out there, then you don't get the funding. Because that's one of the primary reasons why you got the funding, in the first place, is to make sure you make it pedestrian-friendly for pedestrians and bicyclists. And that's what that multi-use path does. So, that's really the best clear answer, is we can't go back, and, unless you wanna lose funding. Now, the 25 itself, timing-wise, I want it done in the summertime, because, again, school's out. It's the perfect time to do that, lower speed limit, it's, school's out, you don't have to worry about school buses right now and all that. Again, you got a little bit of summer school buses, but, you know, not as much. So that's why me and Captain, um, decided to do that, is to get it, that timeframe. You give enough time in the months for them to get used to it. Again, he's not gonna throw out speeding tickets right now. I mean, he's gonna give probably, what, a month grace period? You know? So, get them used to it, and then go from there. But that's the main thing, is you're gonna lose money if you don't put it in.
So to be clear, in order to keep the funding, we gotta leave it this way?
Correct. Yeah, because if you push, all right, let's say, say you wanna push back the sidewalk. Well, you can push back the sidewalk and get a planning strip in there. well, you can push back the sidewalk and get a plan and strip in there, you're going to buy more right-of-way, and you're going to impact properties, and we're going to end up, again, possibly buying out somebody. And that was not, is not the goal, is squeeze that road as best as we can, so we don't have to impact business owners that's been out there for 20, 30 years, and that's the key.
So is there anything you can add, what, maybe like any type of one-foot thing on that sidewalk to keep people from walking right against the road?
Well, you're going to have streetlights, so that's already going to deter them from the one foot.
Because the design showed the streetlights behind the sidewalk, away from the street, not in front, I don't think.
No, it's in, yeah, it's on the, see, it's the back of curb, it's that one foot from back of curb, you're going to have the streetlight set there, and then in the future, you're going to have street trees, right? Once development comes, you get to widen the sidewalk even more, because obviously, streets are going to take that five foot away from you, we can't do that right now, but we at least get the streetlight in there. So that's going to deter them from a foot already. So we're kind of losing a little bit, sort of, but that's the way all downtowns are built, streetlights are right on the street.
Clarence.
So Mr. O'Connor isn't here, but to go back to address him, I haven't had a lot of citizens say anything to me about 25. I imagine, you know, a lot of people aren't happy, but the few things that I want to address would be to Mr. O'Connor. So one thing is, as far as the speed limit, is, as to piggyback on what Todd was saying, what they say at CRTPO is complete street. They're pushing complete streets, which is all-inclusive of everything and getting everything in there, so you have to have all of that. That's why you hear the term "complete street" a lot. The other thing is, I drove the section of the road last night, and Captain Mullis, forgive me, because I did go 35 at one point for research, and, you know, it was late, no traffic, I didn't, I wasn't stopped by the stoplight, but it took me 3 minutes and 13 seconds at 35 miles an hour, and 2 minutes and 35 seconds at 25 miles an hour. So 30-something seconds of your life. Now, of course, that would be impacted by traffic, but, or a stoplight, but you're looking at, when you break it down, how much time are you really saving or losing for those 10 miles an hour? The other thing is, when I was campaigning, I was famous for being out on the streets with the sign holding them up, jumping around on everything, but I noticed then, Indian Trail has a traffic problem. And one of the things I really noticed is right there at South Fork and Indian Trail Road, when people are trying to get across, so they can take their kids to school. And when you lower that speed limit, I think it will help the cars coming across at South Fork. And then the other thing you have to look at is, if, you have to try something different, of course, it's part of what needs to be done, but what good came out of it when it was 35 miles an hour? So if it was 35 miles an hour, you had traffic, congested, whatever, you reduce it to 25, well, if you go back to 35, what good is going to come out of it going back to 35? So again, that's the way I would address a citizen if they approached me with that question, and Mr. O'Connor said it, so, and he's not here, but those are, those are my points on changing the speed limit back to 35.
Can I say one more thing, Mayor?
Sure.
Just to refresh y'all's memory, because it's been a long time ago, and some of y'all went on council, when we first started this project, and we got to start talking to the stakeholders, which is the business owners, that's the first thing we did was, we get, went to all these business owners, sat down, said, okay, this is what we want to do. Well, we had on-street parking in that concept, right where the towns, the Old Town Hall was, because that's where you got room. You didn't really have room anywhere else to put it, but we had room there to put about 10 spots. Well, they didn't want it. Every stakeholder, property owner, for some odd reason, just didn't want on-street parking out there. And we tried to explain, hey, you know, this is, you know, eventually, down the road, you're going to have, you know, the downtown, you're going to have to have some on-street parking, blah, blah, blah. So we took it out, and that's the reason why we took it out, is because they didn't want it, and so as a town, we wanted to be good neighbors to our business owners, so we took it out.
Anybody?
Dennis?
What's the Chestnut Parkway, what's the completion date on it versus our construction down here?
It'll be done before we get done.
It'll be done before the?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It'll be close, but it's going to be a six, probably a six-month difference.
So the speed, what will the speed on Chestnut Extension be?
35.
35?
Yeah.
Okay. So they're going to be going faster there, they'll be going slower, so people will graffite over, well, the big holdup will be the bridge there, but, over the track, but you'll have more, the, people can travel faster on Chestnut Lane Extension.
Yeah, and instantly, DOT is probably going to want to push us to up our side to 35.
Right.
But I don't know if they will, because we're going to be allowed to continue to calve on-street parking there until the traffic counts start going up, which is not going to be for a while.
But in the interim, the problem that we're going to have on Indian Trail Road with the speed limit is that you're going to have construction people out there, you already have a school.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that was the whole point to start.
Your safety issue is going to, is going to be much more dangerous with all that equipment moving and people moving and that sort of thing, so you may as well bring it down to 25 for the safety of the workers there. And then once you get Chestnut, the Chestnut Extension, that's going to solve some of your speed issues anyway, as far as people, they'll all gravitate over there instead of sitting in line on the Indian Trail Road.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we hope happens.
Okay.
They go that way.
I've been here four years. I appreciate you waiting until last meeting to tell us it was going to be 25. But, the, no, so, but my question is, you said funding's dependent on it, and I understand...
Hold on, I think we sent it out of email, did we not send out an email, kind of give it a heads up? I think we did.
But my question is, once it's complete and everything, and it's funded, it's paid for, and we've done it, and I understand that during the construction, we were probably going to have to lower the speed limit, that would have made sense, whether you did it temporary or what. So after it's all done and everything, and we've gone through this construction, can we raise it to 35 later?
You would have to be willing to accept the fact that some parts of that road is not geometrically designed to, for that speed, so...
So, I mean, you know, I just, I just wondered, but, so in other words...
That would be a council decision, but yes, you could if you really wanted to. I mean, it's really up to y'all.
Then, then, I think it makes sense to the public, with, you know, it's lower here and here, and council can decide later if they want to put it at 30 or 35.
Or you could do 35 and drop it to 25 in downtown.
Yeah. I think you answered my question.
So, Chris?
I just have a quick thing to say. I actually support 25. I understand change is not fun, and we all have to get used to it. The only thing that people have come to me is just said, you know, make sure you're enforcing it, because they do feel like they're being bullied off the road if they're doing what they're supposed to do. So I appreciate, you know, hearing that that's what you're doing, but I have had two people directly come to me and, you know, request that if we're going to change it, to enforce it, as well as some of the crossroads, they said people are speeding down those, and that's a major concern as well. So I think, you know, we spoke to someone who voiced that to us at the last meeting. So that's my only, you know, yes, I get it, if it goes down, we do need to enforce it, at least so people, you know, feel safe and don't feel like they're being pushed off the road.
I have a question, and it's for Clarence. You went down the road at 35, and then you went down at 25. Did you do the whole, you went the whole road to it? What was the difference? You said it, what, what?
It's about 38 seconds.
38 seconds. You're talking about 38 seconds longer to drive that length of way? And I was actually there out last night also, and I drove at 30 miles an hour, and it was, I purposely went last night, because there was a lot of traffic out there yesterday because of the poles were being moved, and I didn't, it wasn't a good, they were stopping traffic, so it didn't, didn't make any sense. So 30, I've actually read on social media where people were talking about it was going to take an hour, I'm not kidding, an hour longer to get down the road, and it's only going to be 30 seconds. Plus, eventually, you're going to have, you're going to have the roundabouts, traffic's actually going to move a lot smoother. You won't, you'll get, you'll probably get to the other end quicker than you would now. And I don't know if you want Andy to, or Captain to say anything, Mike, did you, did you want Captain?
He's available, and I think he has some stats on accidents that have occurred.
Captain, did you want to say anything, or do you want to just leave it? Speak if you'd like.
All right, well, I'll just sit here. I'm going to give you my two cents worth. This has nothing to do, from the sheriff's office point of view, this has nothing to do from the Indian Trail point of view. It's your road, and I think it was brought out that this is called a complete street. We get too concerned, too many times, that how my car is going to get up and down the street. I think you, as a council, need to decide, what do you want Indian Trail Road to be? Do you want it to be the photos that have been shown, for however long you've been showing these photos, with folks biking up and down the street, with folks walking up and down the street, jogging up and down the street? I think you, as a council, need to decide what you want. As far as law enforcement goes, whatever you set that speed at, we'll enforce it. That brings up another, something I wanted to mention, Ms. Beal. Everyone, whether they want to admit it or not, knows that, you know, how, nobody drives down the bypass at 65 miles an hour. If you do, you get your doors blowed off, right? So everybody knows, what is, what's the rule of thumb? Everybody knows it, what is it?
Less than 10.
Less than 10. So, and here's kind of my, what I want you to kind of understand, we are enforcing everything that we can enforce. We give you all of these stats, because if I had, if I had 100 guys to sit on Indian Trail Road and work traffic, then maybe we would get 99.9% of the folks who speed and run stoplights and pass on the right, and do the things that are not morally and ethically and legally correct. But we don't have that. I can promise you that what we do have, we're using to our fullest potential, and when we see it, we take every effort to correct it, whether that's writing somebody a ticket, whether that's pulling them over to say, hey, the speed limit's changed to 25, just be mindful, you know? But, but I will, so at what point do you, as a council, because here's the thing, nobody runs 35 on a 35 mile-an-hour street. It just doesn't happen. I mean, as a board, you have admitted that it changed to 25, and you went 35 last night, and you went 30. I'm not, I'm not writing anybody any tickets, but I guess my question is, is if you, at some point in time, you have to say, okay, too much is too much. You know, 50 miles an hour is too fast. Is 42 miles an hour too fast? You know, you know what I'm saying? I mean, there's got to be some, some common sense put into that decision as well. So if you change it to 25 miles an hour, I'm just going to go ahead and tell you, I'm probably not going to drive 25 miles an hour down the road. I'll be honest with you. I drove it today, two or three laps, up and down Indian Trail Road. It was all I could do to go 27. I'm just being, I'm being perfectly honest, and I'm being as logical as I know how to be. Now, this, there's a ton of good information in there. It is from 2020, I put it together, nobody from the town saw it until I brought it in here and gave it to you the same time I gave Mike his copy. There is a ton of good information in here. If you want to read the 100-page document, read it, if you don't, throw it in the garbage. Doesn't matter to me. But what it says is that if you reduce the speed, that whether you enforce it, or whether you have traffic counters or any, just changing the speed limit on the sign from 35 to 25, there are still morally people in this town who are going to go, I'm going to drive 25 miles an hour. If you look, and there again, it says it in here, lowering that speed, if we said, for whatever reason, okay, you've got to get run over by a car, do you want them to hit you at 25, or you want them to hit you at 35? All right, it's going to reduce accidents. What I have, and also to show you, and I understand this, and I'll divide it up if you would like for me to. All of our accidents from January to June, and all of the traffic stops from January to June are here. There were 56 accidents, 237 traffic stops. This is Indian Trail Road between 74 and Old 74, from January till now. I'm not going to be the one to sit here and tell you that, hey, look at me, I'm right. All I want you to notice, on this map, there are, you can't see the blue dots really well, because the red dots cover them up, and I'll be glad to separate it, but from what the study says, reducing the speed makes it safer. If you look at the map, where is it 25 now? In front of the school, right here. Where are the least amount of dots? Where it's 25. You can change it if you want to, it's yours, but I think you have to decide what you want out of Indian Trail Road.
Very good. I think we're, I think we need a motion. Go ahead.
Well, it's already been changed, so there's no motion.
Okay, well, no, but I thought, I thought you...
They said motion as needed.
Motion as needed, same.
But, you know, the bottom line is, is, you know, I'm not going to make a motion to change it, we're going to lose funding, that's, you know, you've worked on this a long time, and if that's where we're at, that's where we're at, but, no, I mean, I know, I know a lot of people don't like it, and people are not going to go 25, and I've been passed, and Little Joe T's learning all his new cuss words on the road, but, other than that, you know, but no, you know, I came in, people wasn't happy, I said, well, we can discuss it, we discussed it, so I'm done.
Okay, very good. So we're not going, we're not going to do a motion, we're going to accept it the way it is, so...
I've talked, I've talked to several people in the lobby that tried to change my mind about it, too, so they've come to the Old Town Hall to talk about it.
It's got its pros and cons. I didn't like it personally when I first saw it, but, you know, if we're going to have a downtown like we want to have a downtown, that's probably, was probably what we need to do, and 30 seconds is not much more time to go, so. Anyway, thank you very much, appreciate that. Andy, that was a great, did a very good job there, thank you, I'm glad I asked you. All right, managers update.
All right. Every other Friday, you get a manager's report, you get it via email along with the public. You have your own copyright there, if there's any questions, I'll answer that. Just a couple of addendums I'll mention to you, is that the Emerald Woods Water Line, that is the first water line that we talked about well over a year ago, they advertise that today, with the bid opening scheduled for July 3 at 2:00 p.m. So once the county does that, makes an award, we'll know what our cost is on that line. We are also waiting for the county to make a decision on Moore's Park, on whether they're going to take that up. Again, they have to design it, bid it, then move forward, then we'll know what our price is. Related to that, we have a number of capital projects, some of which you've heard about that's funded, some that are partially funded, some that aren't funded. For example, sidewalks, I think we've got 14,000 feet on the list, and so I'll be meeting with the staff early part of July to kind of develop that master list and refresh what's funded, what's not funded, and what kind of recommendations do we have on moving forward on some of these projects. We'll bring that back to you at the appropriate time, get your feedback, and see which projects you want to begin to take on. I know there is a big interest in the community, not only here, but other places, just about the ability for someone to be able to walk safely from point A to point B. That's a big need, and we've heard it at some of the neighborhood meetings, that people are afraid to walk right beside the road, and they really want a sidewalk. So unless there's any questions about the manager's report, I will move on to what we've got scheduled for the next meeting. It will be, we do one meeting in July, unless there's a need for a special meeting, that meeting will be, we'll do a quick turnaround, that'll be July 9. We'll have a presentation on GFOA, you already know about it, but the big heavy plaque came in, so I'm going to invite the finance department to be here and get their picture made with the mayor, if they're so inclined. We would have done 4th of July, and Hayden will be giving out who the parade float winners are. If you have not signed up to tell Hayden you're going to be in the parade, please let him know. This is, takes a lot to put together, and the earlier he knows his information, the easier it is for him to do his job. We may have a CIP budget adjustment, we've got various tax reports, you'll also give authorization for the tax collector to collect taxes, that's very important. We'll continue our discussion on the pedestrian plan. I apologize, you didn't have the plan tonight, but you'll get it, give you a chance to read over it and be prepared for any questions. We'll give you an update on the ADA plan, and remember, the ADA plan is a two-year plan that we're doing. I apologize you didn't have the plan tonight, but you'll get it, give you a chance to read over it and be prepared for any questions. Uh, we'll give you an update on the ADA plan. Remember, the ADA plan is a two-year plan that we're doing, American with Disabilities, give you an update on that. That, implementation of that plan, once we get all of the, the things in, identified, listed, prioritized, that will be a multi-year effort by the town to start addressing some of these things, from sidewalks to street signs to whatever. We are also working, in a separate track, on our website and our social media, to make sure that it's ADA-friendly and compliant with colors and things like that. Abby and Bobby are working on that. We also hope to have a report on some of the Old Monroe, uh, Old Monroe Road betterment. So, um, right now, just a few items on the agenda, but they're pretty beefy ones, so we look forward to seeing you here in just a couple weeks.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
That brings us to council comments.
Councilmember Alser Brooks.
Alright, 4th of July Parade, hope to see everyone there. Wanna say thank you, Jim, for coming out to the meetings. I see you, you made it to the end, so I appreciate you being out there. So, everybody else, just have a, have a good day until I see you again.
Councilmember Buhallak.
I also hope to see everyone at the 4th of July Parade. Another event that's coming out, or coming up soon, is the National Out, it's one of my favorites, is August 6th, first Tuesday in August. I am doing the Adopt a Cop, so I just wanna put a shameless plug in. We have a few officers left, so if anyone wants to adopt a cop, reach out to me. Other than that, everyone have a good night.
Councilmember Amburgi.
Happy 4th of July to everyone. I learned a lot tonight. Thank you, Captain, Mrs. Cox, Todd Hunsinger, Brandy and Jim got by with not saying nothing today. God bless y'all, have a great evening.
Councilmember Barber.
A lot of places are having vacation Bible school, still taking registration if you're interested. The VFW on July 20th is hosting a car show, if you wanna take your car, I think they take Volkswagens, I heard, but, uh, all proceeds from that go to local veterans. Kimberly's Place Foundation, dedicated to helping those with, uh, mental illness, is having a second chance prom fundraiser. It's August 3rd, if you did, if you missed the prom and you wanna go, have at it. I won't be going, I've already worn my blue tux with the bell bottoms and everything in the past, so, won't be doing that. But, uh, also, we have Common Heart in the area, a lot of people are hitting that, so they say, uh, they say that 30, just a donation of $35 will feed a family for a week, feed someone for a week. So if you're looking to help out people in the area that are struggling, Common Heart and different ones, like Food for Families, are, are taking donations. Other than that, everybody looking forward to the, uh, July 4th Independence Parade. Appreciate the fire department, really had a good time over there with getting in the fire trucks, and appreciate everything the sheriff's office does, and everybody have a blessed evening, thank you.
Councilmember Gay.
Thanks for everybody coming, especially our last soldier over there, Jim, stuck it through, uh, to the end. One thing I wasn't allowed to say earlier on our social media issue is, uh, you know, we, I think our, the best example we can use of, um, someone putting out wrong information was, it was portrayed as a, a party at a resort, and people playing golf, and none of our people were involved in anything like that, and it was something to honor the people here in the town, and I think it's just a shame that somebody tried to taint that differently. But, um, anyway, we'll keep at it, and, uh, the main thing is to get clear, transparent information to the people in the town, not create stress, and certainly, if you hear something, or something on the street that just doesn't sound right, then call us. And, um, and I think we'll, we'll do well with putting this, uh, these issues out on the, I'm assuming it'll be on the town webpage, when there's disinformation put out there. But, anyway, hope y'all have a great 4th of July, be very careful going home, and, uh, see you next time.
Hello? I'd like to, Jim, thanks for showing up again tonight. I did ask today about the, 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 um, the water line, and I didn't get an answer, but I got positive feelings that they're at least gonna do, start the design part of it, so...
All the water went to the pond.
Well, that's, that's another one, we gotta figure out what we're gonna do with there, so, uh, anyway, if everybody would keep, uh, Eli Tucker and their family and their, their thoughts and prayers, that'd be great. I also want to, to certain people in this room that, that know Samantha Towns had a critical stroke, and, um, she's not doing well. And, um, just keep her in your prayers. She, um, she's, the expect, expectations aren't very high, but Samantha was, uh, was on our planning board, she was, um, she was on our Public Safety Committee. She also went to the very first, um, what did we call that, Adam, the, uh, should give that, the academy, the Citizens Academy, very first Citizens Academy, very much person that was very, very involved with the town. And Samantha used to sit in the Old Town Hall, and her and Shirley Howe and Kathy Higgins had their three seats in the back, and they, we call that the peanut or the popcorn section, and they were there for every meeting. And, uh, she's quite the woman, so Samantha, we love you, and, uh, wish the best for you. And, uh, with that being said, I just want everybody here to go home and hug your loved ones, because you don't know, you know, love them, and, and be nice all the time. I try to be nice, sometimes we don't always succeed, but, uh, go home and give everybody a hug. God bless everybody here, and can I get a adjourn, motion to adjourn?
I'll give a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Unanimous.